Good morning. I'm calling to order the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 12th, 2021, and we'll start with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is the consent agenda. This is a list of items that are intended to be approved in one motion, but the board is happy to pull anyone for discussion. And I have had a request from one of my colleagues to pull item 12B and C, so we can get tooled up for that. But if anybody else has a request to pull and discuss individually another one of the items, I'm happy to do that. Okay, so seen none, what is the board's pleasure on all of the consent except items 12B and C?
All second.
Motion Gustafson, second, Gore. Excuse me. Roll call, please.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes. So the first item is 12B, which is South Placer Fire Protection District's 2020 Fire Impact Fee. So do we have someone to present that? Or Suzanne, did you just want to ask a question about it?
Well, my question on it, the South Placer Fire Protection District impact fee, I just wanted to understand it a little bit better because we also, in that fire district area, pay a fee on our taxes, you know? And we just recently received a survey from the South Placer Fire District regarding raising that fee. We currently, we've been paying $70 a year since 1984, which seems kind of crazy. And so they asked, they're asking everyone's opinion on having a valid initiative to raise the rate to $150 a year, but they also want to include a three, I forgot to bring my one, but like a three and a half percent cost of living raise every year, not to exceed the CPI. And so I was under the impression that that was all that we paid, but this, I just want to understand what this is. Is this impact fee just for new construction and new people coming in?
And Dave Atkinson is on the line, so he can answer those questions.
Good, good, good. Okay, great. Hi, Dave.
Good. Good morning, board members. Dave Atkinson, Assistant Director of Emergency Services, bringing forward this item on behalf of South Placer Fire. In answer to your question, Supervisor Jones, that's correct, this is a fire impact fee. So this is a fee that's borne by new development to the cost of offsetting, providing additional new services. This is different than the sort of a cost of living adjustment for existing services or for replacement costs? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. So are there any other questions or comments about this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Is there my little light on?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll get the hang of this.
Yeah, yeah. Takes a while, but.
All the special districts have an impact fee that comes through to our board every year, but it's fully vetted with the fire district boards, and they recommend that they, we bring it to us for our approval.
Great.
Anyone else from the public would like to address this item? Seen none, what is the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second, Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item 12B is the board's appointment to California State Association of Counties Board of Directors, Bonnie Gore.
Just for clarity, sorry, Chairman, 12C.
12C. Thank you, Megan.
Well, every year, oh, I'm sorry. You probably have a question because every year we are, as a board, asked to approve the appointee to California Association of Counties, and I've served in that role the last, well, this is my third year, and so looking to serve in that role again this next year.
Okay. My question was, when I first came on board in January, my first meeting, I was told that we discuss all these things every January. So it was a little curious when I saw that it's an appointment on the consent agenda. So I just needed clarification to understand it, and so in January, we won't be discussing who sits on this board because you already have been appointed.
Well, I think we would, the term begins in November, is that correct?
For this one, it begins in December.
December.
For their first meeting in December.
Yeah, so I think we would, if I understand everything correctly, if we were to make a change, it would start a full year after that, essentially. But we could certainly consider making a change, we will consider making a change when we do our committee assignments at the end of this year.
Okay, but that won't be effective until the end of?
But there would be a one-year lag time, I think.
Yeah.
Well, and you could always make a change. So if somebody served on a board and we switched out, it wouldn't have to be per this schedule.
Right.
So we could make a change on the board at any time.
Good point.
And we could change people out depending on availability or schedules or interests. So that's available.
Chairman, if I may chime in on this, the reason that we bring this appointment at this time is it allows a representative from Placer County to attend the annual conference, which happens, I believe, in December, November. And so that's why we have to bring it forward. But you are correct, this will come back in January, it will be discussed, and that a change could be made to this committee, and it would be in effect in January.
Okay. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone from the public? Seen none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Motion Holmes, second, Gustafson, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address something that is not on the agenda. Keep in mind, we can take no action today, but if you'd like to do that, just please come forward and state your name for the record and/or Zoom in.
You may recall when I introduced the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution, I cautioned then, without the large number of citizen-owned guns, the Chinese would have replaced you members by now. I understand that resolution has been blocked from a board vote by the chair. Therefore, I revise my contention of August 10. Had the Chinese Communist will not replace the chair should they take over. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board on something that is not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm assuming COVID's not on the agenda?
Correct, yeah, you got this right.
Yeah, Larry Tijery, been in Rockland for about 20 years now. Just want to talk about COVID and vaccine and so forth. Just have some charts here, this is all data. So this is the vaccination against COVID. United States is up here, some of these countries like Iceland, Singapore, Israel. Recently Iceland and Singapore decided like they're opening up their countries, well, at least Singapore has, Norway has, they've admitted that basically, you know, it's been a complete failure, nothing has worked, masking, social distancing, the vaccine. Israel is one of the only countries that's providing truthful, well, we know that they're providing truthful data. Taking a look at this, and down here, India is only at about less than 20%. You know, it was only a few months ago that they were having a big disaster. Looking at the booster shot, Israel's already at 40, about 40%. You know, most other countries aren't even doing the booster shot quite yet, like the United States is less than, it's less than 5%. But then if you look at the daily confirmed cases, Israel's, look at all the cases in Israel, and they are providing truthful data that 85% of their cases in July were with the vaccinated. The CDC announced that they weren't going to be counting breakthrough cases, that was reported in the Harvard Medical Group back in June 3rd. But still the COVID cases, you know, for Israel, Singapore, United States are up here. India's still way down there. One of the main reasons is India's way down there is because they actually use ivermectin. So two states, Gao and Pradhesh, have basically provided ivermectin to all their, they basically hand it out free to all the people. Brazil, the President of Brazil spoke to the United Nations about three weeks ago, there's YouTube videos, and he basically said, health, I'm sorry, history and science are going to hold countries accountable. The context of what he was saying was, because he couldn't understand why other countries are not using early treatment like they are. And one of my, I have a coworker who's Brazilian, he said they've been taking ivermectin forever. They use it because of dengue fever and malaria, it's very common. A lot of these other countries, Africa and so forth, I mentioned last time, Merck has been donating 900 million doses of ivermectin to Africa annually, but now they're saying it's unsafe because they have a new drug that just came out that they're trying to push for COVID. So, you know, ivermectin's cheap and unpatented, so it has no use for the big pharma. This here is just the, these are the deaths, you know, United States is actually very high. What, I mean, they count almost everything as for, you know, if you die of cancer and you also have COVID, you die of COVID. But one of the bigger things is to look at, is India's way down here, you know, it was in the news, was it three, four months ago, it was a big disaster, but looking at the United States, we don't, we don't use early treatment. We basically standard protocol in the U.S. is basically to send people home until they're so bad, it's in the lungs, and then they admit them and they put them on ventilators. So other countries that have opened up are Iceland, well, they didn't so much open up, but they basically said it was a complete failure after they got to the 70% vaccination rate, what they, you know, herd immunity. President Ocaria recently said they hit 50% and they're not vaccinated anymore. They basically said, you can put a fence around our country, but we're done. President Romania came out recently, said 70% of the people don't want the vaccine, and they're shutting down vaccine centers. That's basically it. Thank you.
Larry?
Yeah.
Are the deaths per 1,000 or 100,000 on that chart?
Yeah. Oh, are they?
Yes, that was a question.
Deaths per million.
Per million.
Deaths per million, yes.
It was, yeah, it creates a standard equivalent amongst all the?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and then, would you email me those charts?
Yeah, I will.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Seen none. Okay, well, we're early, so we're going to move to our first department item, which is facilities management, Atherton tenant improvement, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, board reports and county exec reports, which I always do. So is there anyone on the board who has a report and/or does Jane have something on behalf of the county execs office? Suzanne?
Yes, I would like to tell everyone a couple of things. I attended recently a rededication of the Harry Crab Park, which is in the Stone Ridge HOA community, which is in my district. It was, it was quite an event, a lot of people attending, and it's really a cute park, too, if anybody's ever had a chance to go and visit there. They have a gigantic crab that spews water all over the place in the summertime, which is great for kids to play in. I was also asked about a week ago to speak at a local Girl Scout troop on leadership, which was a fun thing to do. And then this last weekend, Bonnie and I attended the Wounded Warrior Event up in Forest Hill. Aside from the drive and getting lost, it was a great event. It was really quite something, and we went Saturday night and had dinner with all of them. Bonnie, you might want to tell a little bit more about it.
Well, if I may, I'll just share that it's an event where they take men and women who've either been wounded or lost somebody in duty, whether it's law enforcement or a veteran, and we actually had several Placer County deputies, as well as there were some Sacramento County deputies participating as well. And they get to be up in the mountains, spend time together, fly fish, which they're going to recruit you in the future, Mr. Wygant, since they have an opportunity out in the middle fork of the American River to fly fish. And it was, it was just terrific to see our community supporting those who have really experienced challenges as they work to protect all of us. So it was an honor to be there, and hopefully you all can attend next year.
Yeah, and part of it is therapy for those that are wounded. They have guides that teach, teach the wounded warriors how to fly fish, and it's supposed to be very therapeutic, and Robert could tell us about that.
Well, you all can probably judge if it's working or not. But I will be pleased and proud to be recruited. You can pass that on soon. Yep. And then Jim?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. As the county representative to the Area Fore Agency on Aging, no, no comments, okay. I'm pleased to announce that the state funding for Placer Independent Resources was passed for home improvements for those in elderly people that have trouble with navigating, because these are grand bars, et cetera. So we have $50,000 in funding to help those older folks that need help.
Okay, then we'll take up our first department.
Actually, I was going to give a quick report. I just couldn't reach it there. Far enough. On behalf of the board, I represent the board on the Tahoe Transportation District and on the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, and both groups are working with a consulting team called RGS, Regional Government Services, to discuss how we deal with transportation solutions. Because we have such low census numbers and so much of our funding is tied to per capita funding sources, yet we're dealing with millions of visitors to the region, we're looking at regional revenue sources, and there's been a lot of disagreement between the two states and the local jurisdictions. The California Attorney General has required the basin governments to raise 20 million a year, starting in two years, in order to continue to reinvest in projects in the Tahoe area. And so we're working very diligently on trying to come up with solutions on that. So I will keep you posted, but it is extremely frustrating to have one arm of the state telling you to raise the money and the other arm disagreeing with how to raise it. So just want to make sure you're aware that it may be getting controversial.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay, I see no other lights. Our facilities item is the Atherton Tenant Improvement Project, and Bill Lardner, I think, is going to take that for us.
Good morning, Chair Wygant. Good morning, members of the board. I'm here today to present an item for a ward of bid to a contractor that will be doing the Atherton Tenant Improvement Project. The item would be three parts. First of all, to award that bid, and then authorize our Director of Facilities Management to go ahead and execute the contract. And thirdly, to approve a budget amendment to fund the project. During the bid time, we, we did have a very successful job walk, we had a well-attended process, we had several different plan holders represented, and ultimately, we received six bids, and the lowest bidder is S.W. Allen from Sacramento. And all the other bids, with the exception of one, were all clustered together at about the same price. There was enough, you know, difference between the first five was very small. So we feel that the content of the bid documents was very clean, they were looking at the same thing and bidding the same thing. I've also been asked to go ahead and describe the improvements a little bit. We're going to be able to have, for the first time in recent history, all of the clerk, county clerk recorder and elections functions under one roof. I don't think that's happened for probably decades. And that process will take just over a year to complete. So we're starting, we're looking to start November 1st with a notice to proceed and to complete the first phase within about six months, and then launch into the second phase, which will complete the project. When we first got the preliminary scope and cost estimate that I put together for this project, we were dealing with some basically preliminary concept. You know, we don't have detailed drawings or even a schematic at that point. So that estimate was a little bit low. And we've also had, the last two years, since 2019, quite a few things have happened, so the construction costs have gone up. The benefits of the building itself are that it would be one consolidated facility, it will also include a large meeting room that is divisible between two parts, so it's got an operable panel partition. And the size of that meeting room is very much the same as the one at Seidra, which is the planning commission hearing room. So that will afford the county with a good opportunity for meetings. The clerk recorder intends to use it for their training during election time. And other than that, it's open to county use, so it'll be a great benefit. The other parts of this project include a voting center, which would be a permanently established room for voting, and with early voting and so forth, that does take quite a bit of time now. It's not just a one-day process, as we all know. And the other parts of it would be that the staff quantity and locations of staffing will afford future staff growth into the future. And the functional elections warehouse, including loading docks and so forth, will be, and it has been already a very, very useful facility. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Bill. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Lardner, for your presentation. I'm excited to support this project. I just wanted to make a comment that the last time clerk recorder and elections was housed in the same building was in the Placer County Courthouse.
I thought that might be true.
Yeah, and actually, when I got my first marriage license, that's where I had to go, to get my marriage license at the county courthouse. And actually, the clerk was really surprised that I was actually born in Auburn. So I just, just a comment, so you'll know how far we've come in the last 70 years or so.
Bonnie?
I do have a question, and Bill, would you explain where the funds are coming from? Because it was, I had a hard time following the report, so if you could share where the dollars are coming from, what's been allocated, that would be really helpful.
Well, it's, it's my understanding that the accounting is taking general fund money and allocating it for this project for the amount that we need. That's?
Capital, capital, so general fund, capital, facilities, reserves.
Yeah, transferring that to the capital project fund.
Okay, so the dollars, and, you know, unfortunately, Todd's not here, so he's stuck in jury duty, I believe. But I just want to make sure that the, we've allocated all the dollars for this project and we're able to complete it. So reading this, I just had a hard time understanding it. Maybe it was just me, maybe y'all got it, and it was just on a Saturday morning and my brain wasn't working when I was reading it. But I just want to make sure the dollars are accounted for. And I see Steve over there, or not Steve, Paul nodding his head.
Yes, the?
He's behind you, Bill.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Paul Breckenridge, Capital Improvement Manager, and yes, Supervisor Gore, the funds are accounted for and we're ready to go with the full funding for the project.
So even with the increase in construction costs and the bid coming in higher than anticipated, we still have the dollars?
We do, absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Excellent. Good question, Bonnie. Good, thanks. Any other board members with questions or comments at this point? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item, either here or on Zoom? Karen, do we need to take these individually, or can we take them? Okay, right. So we can take all together, the three items asked of us, which is the award of the Atherton Tenant Improvement Project to S.W. Allen Construction of Sacramento, authorize the Director of Facility Services to execute the construction contract not to exceed 11.2 million, and then we have to approve a budget amendment, which will require a roll call vote. So it's a pleasure of the board.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second, Gustafson, roll call, please.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So we're still early, so we'll take up our information technology, last mile broadband grant program, Jared and Dieter, I think.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Wygant, members of the board, I'm Jared Easton, Placer County CIO. I'll be presenting with Dieter Wittenberg this morning, he's IT manager. The slides I'm going to cover, I think everybody's seen, but the public has not, so I'm going to go fairly quickly through those and then turn it over to Dieter, and he'll talk about the RFP process. So we're really pleased to present this as like the first project that we're doing, where we're providing, you know, public funding to build out broadband infrastructure into the county. It's the first of many, and so this is kind of dipping our toe in it while we're working on the broadband strategic plan at the same time. So just to cover, you know, kind of a summary of broadband, broadband options within the county, this slide provides a list of kind of the major providers within the county, not a comprehensive list, there's many smaller providers that aren't listed here, but it also shows kind of the many technologies that deliver broadband into our communities. So you've got mobile broadband access or fixed wireless, which are more line of sight, where you might have an antenna on top of a house that are receiving a feed from, from a service like an AT&amp;T. Satellite providers have been kind of problematic, I'd say, in the past, in that it's provided high Earth orbit satellite, meaning that there's a long distance between the satellites and the earth, and that creates a lot of latency on the back and forth, so it's okay if you're doing one-way streaming, but if you're trying to do interactive sessions over satellite, it hasn't been very productive. But in the future, providers like Starlink are going to be providing services in the area, and they're going to be providing low-Earth, low-latency service. They're already providing some pilot services to several households within the county. They'll be a good option for those areas that are really remote and hard to reach. And then cable and DSL have been kind of the traditional means of providing services to houses, but the main one that we're focused on for this round of grant is fiber. Fiber will be around, you know, for the next 100 years, very reliable service. It's synchronous service, meaning same speed up and down, so it's very fast, very reliable throughout the county, so that's what we focused on here. We did a broadband survey in the fall of 2020. We had over 5,000 respondents, but several thousand said, hey, my service is good, so we were focusing on those that responded saying, hey, we have underserved or unserved service, and we had about 3,000 respondents who did that. 23% of those said they couldn't successfully stream video, and 22% said they have, their broadband service is less than 5 meg, so there's direct correlation between those two. And then- And then the federal standard is 25 megabit per second download speed. So we had 62% of households that responded saying that their service is less than that 25. And those are really what we're trying to address. So this kind of gave us a map to show us kind of the regions where our problems exist. These are self-reported. You know, they're reported by the respondent saying, you know, this is the type of service that we have. So we mapped out here anybody that said they either had no broadband service or less than 5 meg broadband service. So you can kind of get a sense of where our challenges are. So some of the challenges due to, you know, the layout of our county, there's a high cost right now to build to those rural areas because we have large parcels, meaning we have to make long runs of technology services out to those parcels. And there's low density, so there's a really low rate of return for our service providers. And state and federal grants, we've had challenges with CASF and CAF II, because if you look at, if you go to like the CPUC map for California or the federal map, it shows that we have got like 98% coverage of broadband service within California. And part of that is because of the low standard. But the other part is, it says, you know, the high Earth orbit satellite providers are covering the entire county. But like I said, you know, the interactive part of that is really not usable. So some industry trends, AT&amp;T is going to be retiring DSL service and moving more towards, you know, that fixed wireless service that I described in the previous slide. I mentioned Starlink is bringing services to the area. But what we're really focused on is the current standard, which is fiber to the home. So Placer County's role, we're right now working on developing a broadband strategic plan for the county. We've partnered with Sierra Business Council doing research right now. We plan to bring that back to the Board in December. At the same time, we wanted to do this RFP instead of just waiting till the very end, waiting till December or January to do something, because we felt like there were projects that were on the hopper for providers. With a little bit of funding, we could push those over the edge and get those greenlit. And that's what you'll see when Dieter presents. We're definitely collaborating with our regional internet service providers to determine the feasibility and technologies for broadband projects now and in the future. We're always looking for new providers to possibly come into the county and provide some additional services. So, you know, that's kind of that collaboration with those folks. And then what we're here to talk about today is develop a last mile grant program. And we're going to be doing several rounds of grants. This one that we're talking about today is just round one. And then, you know, legislation is just continuous at this point, you know, at the federal level, at the state level. And so, you know, one of our jobs in working with Sierra Business Council and RCRC is to really keep track of, you know, what are the changes and making sure we're compliant, making sure we're taking advantage of any funding that may become available to us. So the goal of our last mile grant program is to really provide resources to the private sector, like I said, to greenlight those projects that just aren't penciling out for them right now. So for this first round, we were looking for those shovel-ready projects. In the future rounds, you know, the contribution may be higher for the county. This round, what we're going to be talking about today was about 22 or 23%. Placer County funded, and the rest was funded by Wave Broadband. But, you know, we wanted to focus on some priorities, you know, that we've been seeing over the last year or year and a half, which is, you know, additional remote learning, people working from home. Bringing more broadband services really enables economic development in the county, making sure, you know, that public safety is addressed, you know, that people can access, you know, public safety from, you know, wherever they need to. Telehealth services is becoming more and more prevalent, and just the overall community prosperity as well. So round one, you know, like I said, we were identifying projects associated with the development of last mile broadband infrastructure. We did specify only fiber to the home projects at this point. Projects must be completed within one year of the contract. And projects must have the capacity to either expand services in the future. So, you know, if you think of communities in a row, you know, we may have done the first two communities, and there's two beyond that. So, you know, we were looking for projects that could be built out even further in the future. And then scalable infrastructure, so speeds, you know, aren't an issue, you know, down the road as, as more and more services depend on, you know, the speed of the connection. I'm going to hand it over to Dieter, and he's going to talk about the important part of this presentation.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and-
Good morning.
-Board members. So we did go out to bid, as Jared said, and we released RFP 20195, and that was done in July. And we had over 1,000 firms that were notified originally, and 16 firms downloaded the RFP and three respondents to the actual bid. And X-Wire, Colfax, was one of them, Inyo Networks, and then Astound Broadband, which is locally known as Wave Broadband, were the three respondents to it. We had a panel of five individuals that reviewed all of the details of these bids and weighed, you know, anything from number of homes passed, the value of our dollar towards those projects, and really what type of technology they were using. We limited it to two and did interviews with those firms. That was both X-Wire and Wave Broadband. And from that, we reranked them and chose Wave as the provider for this first round. So I'll give you a little bit of detail about their proposal and the areas that are served. So as Jared mentioned, we are extending fiber to the home, which is a very exciting thing for rural communities, because you don't see that very often. And in this case, Wave's proposal included a 1,500 household passings. Six projects were identified in areas in Auburn, North Auburn, and in Penrin. The total project was almost $2.3 million, and our contribution to that project or those projects is $500,000. And, you know, one of the challenges, as we alluded to before, and Jared had mentioned, the biggest struggle has been the ruralness of our communities and the terrain and the, you know, the rocky terrain that's there. So this is something we've been fighting and battling for a long time, and without our investment, ultimately, some of these things wouldn't come forward. Again, while we're seeing a lot of federal and state funding as well. So let's talk about these projects, and I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. Project number one is Edge Hill Road, which is right behind CalStar off of Bowman. There's a community of 47 homes and, in this case, 1.42 miles of fiber, and all of this is aerial serving these homes. So that is the smaller of the projects that came forward to us. Project number two, which is a community in Penrin between Butler and English Colony, and there were 6.3 miles of fiber, and the majority of that being placed aerially with some underground work being done. And these numbers will probably change as they actually get out to the field to do the work. And estimated 280 households passed there. Project three, there was actually four phases of this particular one, and those are in Christian Valley. As you can see in the map here, a very large build for 42.7 miles of fiber in total, serving almost 1,200 homes. And a good, good portion, again, is aerial in this case, and some underground, 2.2 miles of underground work that was to be done for this as well. So with that said, and I can stop if there are any questions before we go through this, but the requested action today is for approval of this award to Wave Broadband and approve the agreement related to this for our support of $500,000 to this for the period of October 18th, '21 through '22, and then authorize Jared, as the CIO, to sign all the associated agreements and amendments consistent with this bid.
Thanks, Dieter.
Yes.
Cindy and Jim have questions and/or comments, it appears.
Great. Thank you. Really appreciate staff's work on this. It's so critical to so many families and homes and businesses and youth in our community to have access. A couple of questions, though, and Dieter, I've asked you this before. When is Meadow Vista up?
Great question.
In priority, because I had a lot of Meadow Vista folks that are pretty frustrated right now with their existing service provider, as you know.
Yes.
And it appears now Olympic Valley is in a similar boat as of 24 hours ago, losing complete service through their provider, the same provider that's in Meadow Vista primarily. And so I want to make sure that we're, we're addressing these. Are we directing the companies to the areas where we feel there's the most need?
Yeah, so for this round, we did not. We, we opened, we just had it open. We said, hey, do you have projects that are in the hopper right now that you can't move forward with because of funding issues?
Right.
But at the same time, we're working on that broadband strategic plan, where we will identify specific communities, as you mentioned. And then we will be much more prescriptive in the future rounds and say, okay, we just want an RFP for this community or these two communities. And then, you know, we'll evaluate those and move forward with those. So that's how we intend to move forward. And we think as we do that, you know, the contribution will be higher from the county than it was for, for this round. Like I said, it was like 22 or 23% of the total project cost. So when we are more prescriptive, I think we're going to have to contribute more in the future as well. So like I said, December is the timeframe to get the broadband strategic plan done. So as soon as we get that done, you know, we'll start working on grant, round two, for example.
And with that, when we do the RFPs, I think it's so critical, sorry, that we also have customer service standards that we can take into account. So if a company applies for our support, that they live up to certain standards, because it's unacceptable what's happening now with weeks and months of delay in installation of equipment that's promised and/or just nonresponsiveness of the company. So I just want to make sure that that's a criteria in your RFPs, because I want to get the investment made. I just don't want to waste it on companies that are not producing for the customers. And it's, it's really critical to us moving forward to-
We agree.
To do that.
We've both filled enough calls and emails-
Yeah.
... on, on the subject, so it is something-
And our hands are tied.
Yeah.
I mean, the-
And we won't lose sight of that.
CPUC doesn't let us regulate them. CPUC doesn't let us regulate them. The customers just pay and get no service.
It is a challenge with broadband. It is an unregulated service.
Yep.
So we, we hope to pick a provider, and we do feel Wave is, has been very responsive and a great partner. So it's definitely one of the factors-
Yeah, some sort of ranking scale, just to make sure that, that we're investing where it will be well done. And then finally, I think we do need to, as Board members, look at some level of equity in, in how we deploy these funds to make sure that, that we're creating parity between our constituents. It's not just my constituents that have issues, so.
Yeah. Just to add to that and add to what Jared had said, we are just launching a broadband landing page for the county as well. And within that, we will, in the next week or so, have a survey, and we are going to go back out, because that data, coupled with what we're doing on the strategic plan, will allow us to really begin to target those areas. So I'd say to the folks in Meadow Vista, please be on the lookout for that. There will be, there will be a lot of information coming out and marketing around that through our, our partners in the PIO. So that's something that, if without the data, it's hard for us to make good decisions. And so we will definitely hope to get a lot of responses from, from the community there.
Super. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gustafson, just as a brief, excuse me, as a brief postscript to that response, Placer County's efforts in the broadband arena are far from over. We have the CARES money that this Board dedicated to this. We have a set aside in the American Rescue Plan Act money that we set aside from this. And we're also in discussions with the Rural County Representatives of California on the Golden State Connect statewide JPA amongst rural counties. So this is really the beginning.
It is.
Great.
Jim?
Well, thank you. All my questions have been answered. So thank you. I just want to thank Supervisor Gustafson for her very important question. But I'm just glad to see this thing moving forward. We're actually starting to get things done in this arena, and we need to keep moving forward and do more as we go down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yes, thank you both for that. But I did have a question too, as well, about how, how will you work on priorities? I think what's kind of surprising is that people in Granite Bay don't have high-speed internet. Some of my constituents have as much as 15 megabits. And so is that because they're older neighborhoods and they don't have the services? They don't have the, the-
That's correct. That's correct. I know there are a few neighborhoods, because of how the infrastructure was built, be it direct buried cable, that has, that's problematic because they can't just replace it. And so now you're talking about ripping up streets. So yes, there, again, depending on the location, and we'll continue to work with each one of the Board members here to identify those areas and get feedback as well. Again, I would stress, I want people to go to that survey, and I would hope you redirect them there.
Okay.
We will gather that information, and we will go forward with, with the Sierra Business Council, who's helping us with that strategic plan, and come up with, again, rounds of RFPs that will hopefully address those, and hopefully we can prioritize them. But we're going to be listening to you as well, and we're going to try to balance all of that.
Okay. Because some of my constituents said that folks from the Bay Area have come up here to buy in, buy into high-end neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And then, of course, after they purchased their house, they found out that they couldn't telecommute because they don't have high-speed internet. So it's got to be quite a shock.
I, I will say, in working even with Consolidated, I know that they're today, we're looking at doing a fiber overbuild to a lot of their area. So that's a very exciting thing. That does impact south, the south Placer side of things, for the most part, Roseville and some of the communities around there. So there's a lot of attention on it, and it may take some time, but we are definitely going to move in that direction.
Right. And, and those of us that live east of Sierra College Boulevard, we cannot get Comcast, Infinity. There's a lot of, I think, Wave and Consolidated are about the only two that we can even get.
Yeah, Wave, AT&amp;T, and we're working with all of them. And again, we'll continue to do that. We will see probably some new providers come into play as well as we move forward that have done things in other counties, Nevada County as well, that there's a few that have been identified. So we look forward to seeing them and, and again, kind of just moving this thing forward. It's been a long time.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to address this item?
Chairman, I see none.
I'll bring it back to the Board for consideration. Motion, Jones, second homes. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
It was Gustafson. That's okay.
What am I missing?
I made the motion. That's okay.
Oh, motion Gustafson. Who made the second?
We're going to weigh you out.
Okay. We got it straight now?
I appreciate that.
All right. Did we vote?
Thank you.
Aye.
We're good?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move back to our first timed item, which is a proclamation, November 2021, as Arts and Culture Month in Placer County. And I will first read the proclamation and then bring it down to present, and Placer Arts can have a chance to make any comments if they wish to. So whereas the Arts Council of Placer County is the designated state local partner of Placer County and the Arts Council of California, whose programs and services encourage and support the community to experience art in all degrees. Whereas each November over the past 28 years, ACPC has supported and promoted the Placer Artist Studios Tour to encourage engagement, engagement between our community and Placer County artists and makers to improve the quality of life in our region. Whereas this November, ACPC is committed to celebrating all sector of our arts and community to highlight artists, performing arts, dance, theater, spoken word, and to serve all communities in Placer County. Whereas Arts and Culture Month is an opportunity for Placer County residents to show their community pride through supporting all aspects of the arts, live, live performances, and local makers. Whereas the arts foster cultural development, and the ACPC prioritizes socially vulnerable and underserved populations and people of color, and is promoting equity through art. And whereas art serves to enrich the physical, economic, social, and cultural elements of our community, the greater access to the art, the greater the individual pride in the community. Now forethere, be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors, Placer County, on behalf of citizens of Placer County, which causes me to take pause and say, is there a motion and a second?
Second?
Don't need one?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And so now I'll present this to you, and you'll have a chance to- And so now I'll present this to you and you'll have a chance to. If you guys like them, don't.
Look at that. Wow. Little closer.
Did we break it?
Nope. Come on. We have to have ours.
Not quite perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can I say something really quickly? You're going to say something?
Barbara?
Sorry. We're done.
Chairman Wygant, members of the board, and Jim Crossway, the executive director of the Arts Council of Placer County. I just wanted to thank you all for your support of the arts over the years. It's been my pleasure, my five years being here to work with all of you. I also wanted to make a quick comment thanking Sherry Conway for all of her work. She was our contract administrator and was just marvelous to work with, so very, very happy to have worked with her. I do want to introduce a couple of people with me. I have our chairman, Barbara Burge, who is with me today. And I have Janet Nicholson, a board member of ours, also a 40-year resident of Auburn, and the person who is mostly responsible for taking over the Studios Tour this year with her group of volunteers and artists and done a marvelous job. So I'm going to ask Janet to maybe say a few words about the tour. We have lots of great things planned for November and look for them and we'll have a great time with the arts. So thank you so much for your support.
And thank you all. Now that we are our own independent organization, the Placer Artist Tour, we appreciate your financial support this year to move our tour into the future as an independent legacy event in Placer County. We have 111 artists, eight galleries, 25 new artists, nine regions. We've broken into regions countywide from Roseville as far up as Gold Run. And on your desk, hopefully you have a guidebook and also an invitation to our taste of the tour. This year, it's at Blue Line Arts Gallery, which is the premier visual arts gallery in Roseville. We're having a 4:30 early opening first look for our VIPs and sponsors. So I hope that you will all, including your staff and aides, will be able to attend. We have wine and beer locally donated and restaurant bites from about six different Placer County restaurants. So you can take a look at each artist. We'll have a piece of art on the wall and you can take your guide and plan your tour, which is November 12th, 13th, 14th. And so I hope that you'll be able to come for the early look at 4:30. We have been partnering also with the Auburn Symphony and they will have a duo there to perform at 4:30 for you. So thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Janet. Do you have any questions for us? Just a couple of comments. One is, I think Placer Arts has always been the partner for the county with the state. I think that's true. And then, old story is, when I was on the Planning Commission way back in the early 90s, the Nickelsons, we did not have a home-based business ordinance and they had a home-based business out of their home, a very successful arts studio. And you helped us craft that ordinance, which allowed you to operate legally out of your home. It's been a great success ever since.
And that was the scariest time of my life. Beyond having children, I suppose.
I didn't think we were that scary, but.
No, it was because we were only, we've been here 41 years and we really wanted to be a part of the community. And so you all had to step up and help rebuild this ordinance because at the time, you couldn't have a home business, even in your house, even in your garage. And so it was time and we were happy to be a part of that and happy to be part of the community.
Tremendous success.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Hi, good morning. This is Twana Armstrong. I am a proud member of the Arts Council, ACPC's board. Unfortunately, a scheduling conflict could not join them this morning, but awfully, awfully proud of Jim and the staff there at ACPC. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your ongoing support of ACPC. As you know, this past year was very different, very unique, and I do believe it is because of the arts that we have been able to make sure that those in the community felt some support for mental health as well as staying engaged. So we do appreciate all that you do for ACPC. Jim and staff, great, great proponents of doing what they can to make sure that all forms of art are recognized. So thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now we'll take up our 9:35 timed item, which is also a proclamation declaring October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And my colleague Bonnie Gore is going to take this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a proclamation in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it really came to my attention more so this year when we had a tragic death, a domestic violence death in a workplace in our community. And I had an opportunity to meet with Rebecca Chenoweth, who is representing Stand Up Placer this morning. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then we can present it. Whereas one in every three teenagers, one in every four women, and one in every six men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. A woman is assaulted or beaten every nine seconds in the U.S. Domestic violence is the leading cause of injury to women in this country. Every day, at least three U.S. women are killed by their partners. And whereas approximately 5.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year and approximately 60% of abusers abuse the children in the household. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas survivors of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, housing, and other supportive services so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas we encourage domestic violence survivors and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim services organizations such as Stand Up Placer by calling local crisis hotlines or the National Domestic Violence Hotline. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare, allied professionals, philanthropic organizations, and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence and their families. And now we proclaim that October 12th is, we are proclaiming this month as, October 2021 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, to encourage people to wear purple, as I am doing so today. And just encouraging people who you might think could be a victim of domestic violence, encourage them to get help, their services available. And I appreciate organizations like Stand Up Placer who do these great services. So with that, maybe we can take a motion?
I guess we don't, proclamation said we don't have to, is that correct?
We don't have, we do on this one.
There you go. It's a tough day. So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, and I'll bring this to Rebecca Chenoweth and then we can have her make a couple of comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Thanks, Sidney.
Good morning. I wear my purple today. You've got your ribbon.
Thank you.
Ready? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm Rebecca Chenoweth, Chief Operations Officer, Associate Director at Stand Up Placer. And I want to thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for your thank you to us and thank you for supporting Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. I'm not wearing purple, but I do have a purple ribbon, which signifies Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
We'll now take up our, oh, I'm sorry, Megan.
Hi, good morning. This is Twana Armstrong again. I also sit on the Stand Up Placer Board and want to say, we so appreciate your recognizing this month, Domestic Violence Month, and placing spotlight on the importance of us being there for the community for those who are somewhat, find themselves in these predicaments. So thank you again, Board of Supervisors, for your support of this month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll now move on to our 9:40 timed item, which is Community Development Resource Agency, Community Facilities District, Sunset Industrial Area, Annexation of 170 Cyber Court, Brockton, Michelle.
Hi, good morning. Michelle Kingsbury with the Community Development Resource Agency. This is for your consideration today, Annexation Number 18 into the Sunset Community Facilities District Number 2012-1, which is for fire and emergency services within the Sunset area. The property, as Supervisor Wygant mentioned, is 170 Cyber Court, which is commonly known as our Green Heck Fan Corporation. It's approximately a 6.97 acre parcel. They do have a design review, design site agreement, application in for a security fencing, security gate, and some signage, which trigger the requirement for annexation into the CFD. The property is located within the future annexation area that was approved and identified back in 2012 when this CFD was approved by your board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has or we can move forward with the actions.
Any questions from board members? See none, the clerk can report.
We received one ballot in favor.
Thank you.
I think there's a raised hand.
Is there anyone then from the public who'd like to address this item?
Mr. Garabedian, go ahead and mute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Supervisors. Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. This project has a number of what we call watch factors on it. I'll list them. An annexation issue, a transportation nightmare facing whoever's buying property in this part of the county in the future, Sunset Area Plan, Placer and Specific Plan, the CSU Sierra College, Sierra College mislocation, the PCCP, Placer Conservation Authority, and finally, the history in the county of competition between fire districts for development. Those will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Chairman.
With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Second?
Motion homes, second core. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. We'll now take up our 9:50 timed item, which is Community Development Resources Agency, also Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Amendment, Development Agreement Amendment. And Kelly.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Wygant, my name is Callie Kedinger Cecil of the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is a request for approval of a specific plan amendment for Property 1B in the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. The Placer Vineyard Specific Plan is located south of Baseline Road and east of Waluga Road in unincorporated Placer County. Property 1B is located in the northeastern portion of the plan area located east of Watt Avenue. Property 1B is approximately 56 acres and is zone-specific plan. It has flat terrain and the dominant grassland is, the dominant vegetation is grassland and an approximate three-acre portion of the site supports residential uses and outbuildings. There are three vernal pools and a drainage swale on site as well. The Placer Vineyard Specific Plan was originally adopted in 2007 with amendments adopted in 2012, 2015, and 2019. This plan has undergone a comprehensive environmental review process and in 2016, a mitigation and monitoring reporting program was adopted. To demonstrate whether a project would require further analysis in this plan area, a checklist for conformity review has been created pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15182 through 15183. A number of master plans have also been developed to facilitate development of the project. I'm not going to list them all, but just a few include a sewer master plan, urban services financing plan, landscaping plan, and development phasing plan. The project before you is a proposal to amend the land use designation specific for Property 1B. They are proposing to eliminate the low-density and high-density residential uses, reduce the acreage of the religious use, increase the open space allocation, and modify onsite circulation patterns. This figure shows the approved specific plan on the left and the proposed amendment on the right. An east-west connector would be eliminated and Town Center Drive would be modified in order to accommodate the increase in open space. The MDR is shown in gold, the HDR is brown, the LDR is yellow, and the religious use is blue. The little religious use is up there as well. This project is also proposing to amend the development agreement to reflect the land use changes, and no development is proposed with this specific plan amendment. These changes are proposed in response to an environmental impact statement prepared by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as required by the National Environmental Protection Act for the Placer Vineyard Section 404 Clean Water Act Programmatic Permit. The EIS identifies five areas where additional avoidance of aquatic resources could occur. Property 1B was identified as one such area where three large vernal pools and a drainage swale currently exist. This figure shows the avoidance area in yellow. In order to accommodate the increase in open space, adjustments are required to the approved land uses. This table shows those changes and include a proposal to completely eliminate the LDR and HDR uses, increase the amount of MDR by 11.6 acres, reduce the religious site from nine acres to .6 acres, and increase the amount of open space for a total of 19 acres of open space. These land use changes would also result in approximately 2.2 acres of reduction in the roadway uses. These proposed changes would not increase or decrease the overall approved unit count of 253 dwelling units. It should also be noted that though they are proposing to substantially reduce the religious land use, that houses of worship are in allowable use in all of the zone districts within the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. An addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report was prepared in accordance with CEQA Guidelines for projects where an EIR has been certified. Per CEQA, the county must determine whether the proposed changes would trigger the need for a subsequent EIR. So a number of reports were prepared to determine if the project would result in newer, more significant impacts, including a subsequent conformity review checklist, a rezoned fiscal impact analysis, a traffic memorandum, a drainage memorandum, and a sewer dwelling unit equivalent and flow summary. The results of these reports demonstrate that the proposed amendment would not result in any new or more severe significant impacts than those identified in the original EIR. No changes to the mitigation and monitoring reporting program are required, and no changes to the master plans would be required based on the amendment. The land use changes would not affect the project's financing and no additional public utilities or facilities are required. A detailed CEQA analysis would occur when development for the site is proposed. Shown here is the proposed amendment to the development agreement. Exhibit 2.2 would be amended in order to reflect the proposed land use changes. Staff has considered the proposed amendment's consistency with the approved Placer Vineyard Specific Plan and determined that this amendment would be consistent. No new land uses are proposed and the residential character envisioned for the site would be maintained. The increase in open space for additional aquatic resource protection is consistent with several goals of the specific plan, including the creation of community buffers, protection for open space, and natural resource protection. The total unit count of 253 units is not changing. This project was presented at the West Placer Municipal Advisory Council meeting on July 21st. At that meeting, MAC members raised questions about the reduction in the religious land use and a public comment was made regarding the number of amendments that have been proposed within the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. At that meeting, the MAC voted 5O to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval for your board to approve the amendment. On August 12th, this item was presented before the Planning Commission. At that hearing, questions from the Planning Commission regarding the request to eliminate the HDR and LDR uses was made, and a member of the public also had a question on the number of general plan amendments that are allowed to occur annually, as well as a comment on potential traffic impacts resulting from the proposed changes. traffic impacts resulting from the proposed changes. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project to your Board. One comment letter from Defend Granite Bay was received, and this letter expressed concerns over eliminating the HDR and LDR land uses, questioned the rationale for increasing open space, and expressed concerns over the reduction to religious land use. These concerns have been addressed in both the staff report as well as this presentation. Staff is recommending that your Board take the following actions: adopt a resolution, adopting an addendum to the certified Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, supported by the findings contained in the staff report; to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, supported by the findings contained in the staff report; and lastly, to adopt an ordinance approving a second amendment to the second amended and restated development agreement by and between the County of Placer and Hodel Family Enterprises LP, relative to Property 1B, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. I'm available for any questions you may have, and the applicant team is also here as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Good job. I have a couple of questions right off. Bonnie, when was the 404 issued on the project? Do you know?
I believe 2014, if memory serves.
Yeah, so a while ago. And then on houses of worship, if I understand correctly, they're allowed in any of our zone districts countywide, I believe, not just in the Vineyard Specific Plan. But in some instances where the zoning might cause more conflict, the permitting requirements may be more rigorous or less rigorous if it's obvious that that's not going to be the case. Is that correct?
That's a correct statement. Yeah, typically, any zone district in the county can propose a church facility, house of worship, with a conditional use permit.
Yeah, thanks, CJ. Bonnie?
Thank you. Appreciate the report. I would like to have you actually explain, since you mentioned it was in the staff report, but there are questions about the high-density residential. And I want to just have you share, and maybe the applicant share, that we're not losing HDR, and that there are other parcels that have picked that number up, and that we're actually increasing that number. So, I certainly understand people's concerns about losing that, and it's important that we make sure we have high-density residential. So, if you would share with that. The other question, as well, somebody brought up the question of SB 10, which was just recently signed by the governor. My understanding is that affects infill areas, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to take a look at that, but I don't think that that's a concern, the SB 10 issue in this area, because that is focused on areas that are near transit and high-density or infill areas, which this is greenfield and not infill.
Yes, happy to answer those questions. So, for your first question regarding this proposal to eliminate HDR, though Property 1B is proposing such, it should be noted that the overall amount of HDR provided by this plan has actually increased by 3.8 acres compared to the initial approval. This is due to a density bonus that was approved for Property 1A back in 2019. Furthermore, this specific plan contains policies for density transfers of up to 10%, and the elimination of the HDR does not preclude the MDR areas to propose density transfers. There's no changes to the affordable housing obligation, and Property 1B is still required to provide 10% of the dwelling units to be affordable. Regarding SB 10, I can't recall if I read the exact text of that. I did also recently read SB 9, and they're very similar. So, having said that, I don't know if, perhaps Karen could answer that a little better. Thank you.
So, SB 10 prohibits the local government from reducing density of any parcel that an ordinance has assigned a density of 10 units or more. Now, that doesn't apply here because the prohibitions are when this parcel is, as you mentioned Supervisor Gore, within a transit-rich, a transit-rich area is exactly how the bill reads, or an urban infill. This is neither. So, therefore, it doesn't apply.
Thank you. Thank you.
Then, within that context, kind of building on that thought process, high-density, more affordable housing, obviously, that's an issue that the Board has taken up over the last 10 years with much more enthusiasm, and there's a lot to point to. But, so, the 404 was issued years ago. The conservation plan was approved more recently. The conservation plan provides for essentially, policy-wise, that areas that are called out for development should be developed and not have conservation kind of plugged into the middle of places where it may not be that compatible. But, in fact, out in the reserve area where the open space will be surrounding the conservation, and it will be more biologically healthy, et cetera. So, had it not been for that timing sequence, this opportunity may not have been lost. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, is, any other comments or questions from Board members? Anyone from the public like to address this item?
Seen none, I will bring up.
Nope, there is some.
There is.
And the applicant.
There is, twice. Come forward, yeah, come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Eric Crowe. I work for McCann-Som Civil Engineers, and I'm here representing the landowner and our team, Property 1B. Just like to take a moment to thank you for hearing and hearing our item this morning. Thank the county staff for working with us and getting this project to this point, and providing a thorough presentation. We have no further presentation this morning, but we are here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions by Board members? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And someone else? Megan?
Mr. Garabedian, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors again. Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. We are opposed to this project. But, as a point aside, we would suggest that the agendas list the number of units that are affected by each of your agenda items, in this case 253, and we should also point there's a need for public to be able to have access to these areas to see them. So, on the project itself, there are big changes. The person who developed all of these 20 or so properties told everybody, including me, that Watt Avenue was going to be widened in order to serve, that would serve these projects. Apparently, that's not happening, and now the county is proposing widening the baseline road. So, there's a traffic nightmare ahead in the future for this that needs to be addressed, not just only CEQA, but in your planning process for this. And here, again, we have multiple changes of a plan. We have the problem of the county cir, county cir, need for county services out there, far away from where they are now, not very wise, and very concerned about Chairman Wiegand's discussion of the Placer County Conservation Plan. Apparently, he's indicating regret that this project wasn't able to go under the PCCP so that the wetlands on it could be wiped out instead of having to be protected. That's what I took your comments to mean, Supervisor Wiegand. So, very concerned about this project, and those are our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Chairman, no further comments.
Yeah, so to clarify my particular position and comments for the public, concept behind the conservation plan, one of the basic fundamental premises was that conservation for mitigation as a result of development would occur out in a reserve area surrounded by open space so that the biological integrity of that conservation would be better protected as compared to, for example, 40 acres of vernal pool preserve that is protected, avoided near the Galleria, which is now completely surrounded by urbanization. Now, one could make an argument that there should never be any destruction or compromise to lands that are protected, but if, in fact, that was the case, we wouldn't have been able to build a sewer line between the county and the city of Lincoln, or roads that we need, or school sites, et cetera. So, obviously, you need that mechanism. It's just that this mechanism is biologically far superior than the way business was done before the conservation plan was put in place. So, without clarification. Bonnie, you have some questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So, I just want to clarify, Kelly. This is, this development is contiguous from the city of Roseville to Placer Vineyards, which is Property 1A that's currently being developed, correct? And this is the next piece of land. So, it's contiguous land being developed, correct? I mean, it's not leapfrog development here.
It's not what, it's not, well, it's, so, Property 1B is adjacent to Property 1A. The way that Placer Vineyards is developed is the first phase of development includes several of the properties. Property 1B is not within Phase 1A, but you are right that it is contiguous to a parcel that is currently under development. When development is proposed, which it's not with this specific plan amendment, we would come back to your Board for approval.
All right, thank you. And then, with the question about, and the comment about Watt Avenue and baseline, I mean, both of those roadways will be improved based on the number of homes that are being developed out there. Each home has a fee that has to be paid towards the development of those roadways. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Megan?
Actually, I think that I had a, I want a clarification as well, because Mr. Garabedian suggested that we were eliminating 253 units. And what I, as I read the staff report, it was very clear, the same number of units are being built, just a change in the density.
That's correct.
Just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Good point, Cindy. Okay, see no other comments, or if there are any comments, now's the time. If not, we'll bring it back to the Board for action. Motion, Holmes, Second Corps. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move back to department items and Parks and Open Space Proposition 68 Per Capita Grant Program. Andy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Andy Fisher with the Department of Parks and Open Space. As you mentioned, the action items before you today are concerned with Proposition 68 Per Capita Grant Program. That is a program, it is a bond measure, approved by the voters of California in 2018. Prop 68 contained a number of grant programs related to parks, open space, and trails. Couple of the other programs, we actually expect to be back at the next Board meeting with authorization to apply for some of the competitive grants. You'll see those come up, but this particular grant program, the Per Capita Grant Program, is a non-competitive program of Prop 68. And the actions today ask you to affirm the list of projects that we propose to invest those grant funds in, to appropriate $47,800 in Sheridan area park fees as required matching funds for one of those projects, and approve various budget amendments to allow us to receive those grant funds and place those into their respective capital project funds so that they could be expended on those projects. Originally, when we first heard about the Per Capita Grant Program, we came and briefed your Board in January of 2020. At that time, the expectation was that counties of our size would receive $400,000 each. Like so many things in 2020, the rollout of the final guidelines and appropriations was delayed by COVID, but when they did come out earlier this year with the final allocations, we were happy to find out that we were approved for $633,810. So, with that, we've reworked our recommendation on those funds. We worked with the Parks Commission to come up with criteria and a recommendation, and among those criteria for which projects to apply these Per Capita Grant Funds to, there were seven criteria that we looked at. One, that the project meets the program criteria. The program is geared toward recreational infrastructure, not so much, not specifically toward maintenance, not toward acquisition, things like that, is for recreational infrastructure. Looked for projects that can be completed during the performance period of the grant, which is prior to March of 2024, so shovel-ready projects. Projects that are not easily funded through alternative sources. As I mentioned, some of the other grant programs are more geared toward trails, open space, things like that. Finding flexible dollars that can be applied toward traditional active parks is hard to find, and that's what these are specifically geared towards. So, we looked at some of those facilities that we have. We looked for projects that were consistent with general plan, community plan, and our draft Park and Trail Master Plan. So, in other words, projects that didn't just come out of thin air, they had already had a demonstrated demand and some formal recognition of the projects. Projects that had matching funds available to them, we're not recommending any general funds be applied as matching funds. It would all be funds that have already been appropriated to projects or park dedication fees. Projects that benefit health and safety was important to our Parks Commission, and also projects that are on land that meet the tenure requirements of the program, specifically 30 years of land tenure, and that affected some projects on property that we manage but don't own. In July, the Park Commission recommended the same package of projects that we're here to talk about today, and I wanted to go through those projects. As you can see on this slide, they are scattered throughout the county in various geographic areas. I'll begin with, I think the next slide is Martis Trail, which is out of sync with the staff report, but since they're in the slides, I'll talk about it in this order. The Martis Valley Trail is part of a larger network that we call the Resort Triangle, which will be eventually a paved trail that connects the communities of Truckee, North Star, Kings Beach, Tahoe City, Olympic Valley, and back to Truckee in a big paved, separated loop. And then, to zoom in on the Martis Valley Trail portion, which extends from the town of Truckee, you can see on that slide the airport at the very upper-left portion of the screen, portion of the trail that's already been built from the Truckee town limits out into Martis Valley. And the sections that you see there in red and in pink, purple, violet, whatever that color is, are under construction right now. We're very excited that those projects have been able to move ahead. So, we expect that we will have continuous paved trail from the town of Truckee to North Star Drive paved out within the next few weeks. So, that's actually ahead of what we thought we could achieve. That still leaves the section of trail from North Star Drive up to North Star Village, and also parking and interpretive elements that go along with the Martis Valley Trail. So, that's the first project that we are asking to apply $175,000 in prop, in Per Capita Grant Funds to. That would match the total project cost of 1.9 million to get up to North Star Drive. Those matching funds are already in the project account, mostly derived from previously allocated TOT and park fees with some grants in there as well. There's just a shot right now of Martis Valley. That's looking east toward Mount Rose. The highway there is Highway 267, and that's the portion that will be paved just within the next couple of weeks and give folks that paved access year-round from Truckee to North Star Drive. Dutch Flat Pool, one of the little gems on the west slope of our Sierras, really the pride of Dutch Flat. It's supported by an assessment paid for by locals up there. It has been a pool, or at least you can see in the inset from back around the 50s, it began life as a pond, and it has improved year over year, time after time. To be just a gorgeous little place, if you've never been there, take a look at it. Great place to be, but one of the things that it does need, because of its age, is a new restroom that's ADA compliant, and so this project would provide that new restroom. This already had, this project's kind of moved ahead of the rest of the projects on the list. Your Board, back in April, already appropriated $35,000 in park fees, and we're looking at $140,000 in per capita funds to match that $35,000 total project cost of $175,000. Next project, the third of four projects, is Griffith Quarry Park and Museum, right on the corner of English Colony and Taylor Road down in Penrin. The site has a great little museum discussing the history of Griffith Quarry, which during Gold Rush days and into the early 1900s provided a lot of the granite that you see in the iconic buildings in San Francisco and all over California. Has a great history of the quarry there. It also has, it comes with 30, we have about 32 acres there and a trail system, and we really want to revamp the entire area, to give it a facelift, to freshen it up after a number of years of use. You can see there, somebody built a campfire on top of one of our wooden tables, bless their heart. You can see some of the fencing that's getting old and needs replacement, some of the older trashcans that are kind of dented up, and so we want to go through, we've started it in phases, replace all of those amenities. You see our folks working on some of the fountains there, replacing those. That bench in the upper right-hand corner is one we've started to use and are really happy with. That's not wood, that's actually a cast concrete textured to look like wood, so it's a lot more durable than the ones we've had before. You can see our folks doing drainage improvements in the parking lot there in the lower right-hand corner. So, that would be combined with, like I said, fencing improvements and interpretive program, putting all that together, trail work, vegetation management throughout the park. Total project cost of $353,000, asking for program funds of $127,000. That project has mostly been funded with park dedication fees from the local Loomis area, but also a $50,000 donation from the Linda Adams Estate. So, shout out to Linda Adams. So shout out to Linda Adams and her descendants who gave us that money to help this project along. And then finally, oh, there's Griffith Quarry that shows you the trail system there and some of the interpretive signage and elements that we'd be looking at providing throughout the park to really highlight its great history. And then finally Sheridan Park, right off of Camp Far West Road that you can see there on the right-hand side of the screen, and even from this aerial shot, you could see that this park could use a little love. The playing field on the left-hand side has kind of gone fallow over years from miss, from lack of use. We're seeing an increased demand, not just for organized sports, but for a place in the community for people to be able to throw a frisbee, walk their dog, things like that. So we've engaged in a kind of a multi-phase project to give Sheridan Park and Stewart Hall a facelift and a rejuvenation, rejuvenation to make it really usable and a pride of the community again. This first phase with the program funds would rejuvenate that field in the back and put a track around that field as well. Total project cost of this phase, $239,000, asking for $191,200 in program funds in the remaining match, which is part of the action item today would come from the Sheridan area, number 11, park dedication fees. So with that, I will turn it back to the board for any questions.
Thanks, Andy. Great presentation, and thanks to you and your staff for having these projects ready to receive these investments. Appreciate that. Any comments, questions by board members? Suzanne?
Yes, hi Andy, how are you?
Good morning.
I do have a question on projects that were removed. It said that the Sterling Point Equestrian staging area, a restroom, I guess. And so I'm just wondering, what does it mean that it is not likely shovel-ready as opposed to it's not shovel-ready? And also too, because I'm kind of drawing a little bit of an inference here that we're doing a bathroom for the Dutch Flats pool, a new restroom.
Yeah, now let me answer, that's a great question. So a couple of things go into the Sterling Point restroom. It is a high-demand project. You'll see on our capital improvement list with the draft master plan that it showed as a tier-one improvement. Back in 2020, we had requested $25,000 in program funds, and the majority of the funding for that program was going to come from Granite Bay area and Loomis area park dedication fees, which both have ample fees to complete that project. One of the other things that is, that we did learn as the program rolled out is that every project requires its own application, its own accounting, those kind of things. And so our thought was only requesting $25,000 compared to the amount of administrative burden to administer that project, which hasn't gone to design yet. We felt like it would be easier having ample park dedication fees in the local areas to fund it locally rather than through this grant program that went into our thinking. But the project itself, we believe, has the ample funding available and is still tier-one on our priority list to finish.
Okay, well, just was curious why it wasn't kind of given a little bit of grant money as well. I noticed everyone else, most of these are all matching funds by park assessment fees that locals are paying, just like Granite Bay.
Right.
So is there some standard that it has to raise up to to meet?
There is not. It would still be an eligible project.
Eligible or ineligible?
It would be an eligible project.
Okay, okay. So maybe down, further down the road, if you get more grant money? Or will we just go ahead with the improvements based on the money that we have from the assessment fees?
Our intent is to come forward as soon as we have the project management availability to perform the project with a request of park fees to finish the project. If you'd like to see us, we will certainly continue to beat the bushes for matching funds for that project.
Okay.
If the board pleases.
So it doesn't sound like it's all that urgent if they're not really that far along the progression of getting everything ready for, to move on the construction of it.
Well, it does, it does need to have a certain amount of project management time to provide the design and the hookup of what's involved in sewer-ing it and things like that. It is, like I say, it's tier-one, but it is kind of, it's looking at, we do have limited project management availability. We do have these projects that do have deadlines. So I don't want to say that it's back burner. It's just not quite as far ahead as the ones that have these deadlines for the grant match.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Andy.
See no other questions, comments from board members? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Just please come forward and state your name for the record.
This is not something I was going to address, but I was just looking up Prop 68. I'm Michelle Derby. Prop 68 has grants, like millions of dollars going into it. The thing is, is these parks and trails, I'm all for it because I love doing that, but we have restrictions right now where our kids aren't even allowed to enjoy this. So are we going to use the millions of dollars for grants? Are we going to use taxpayer money? That's my question. And I do want it to look great, but the way our country is heading looks like we're not going that way. So is, or why not use the grants, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, thanks. Maybe Andy, you could develop that a little bit more?
Sure. And I will say that all through, you know, COVID and everything else, we have kept every one of our parks open and available for people to use. And so Prop 68, like I mentioned, it was voted on by the taxpayers of California. It appropriated a certain amount of bond funding specifically for the categories that came out of this grant program. So this money is appropriated, $633,000 is offered to Placer County to use for recreational infrastructure, and it's a use it or lose it for that purpose. We don't have the authority to re-prioritize it to anything else.
But you do have the ability, and I think you reported this, to apply for the competitive grants, because she's correct. There's millions of additional dollars available, but we have to compete for those. These are dedicated per capita based on our population numbers. We get a share of the state's money guaranteed us if we can produce projects.
That's exactly correct, and specific to the-
Kind of used to do this, so I know.
That's right, right. And this is titled the Prop 68 Per Capita Program. Other programs, the Trails and Greenway Program, Regional Park Program, other programs are competitive.
And fortunately, I would just add that as compared to in the beginning, I'm pretty sure it's scientific consensus that our chances of getting COVID out of doors is virtually impossible, and so we're making more venues more available for people to do that. Just an editorial on my part.
May I ask a follow-up question? So the Prop 68 dollars, the competitive grants, have we, have those been opened up? Have we had an opportunity to apply for those or get any of those competitive grants?
We have. We've been awarded $3 million from the Trails and Greenway grant. We will be back next week to apply for a couple of the, they're rolling them out one at a time. The Regional Park Program and the Recreational Trails and Tourism Program, I think is the name of the other one.
So we've gotten some, we'll continue to apply for more.
We have, exactly.
That's helpful to know. Thank you, Andy. And I just wanted to say thank you. I know the folks in Dutch Flat have been working on this with you for probably a decade, so it's not like it's just happened and as part of this per capita program. They've been trying to get the pool improvements done, the restroom improvements done, so thank you.
And a shout out to that group. They are a very faithful volunteer group who contribute a great deal to their pool.
Absolutely, they do.
Thank you. So with no other comments or questions from the public, we have to affirm the list of projects as delineated in the staff report and approve the park dedication fees also discussed, and then approve a budget amendment. So it's a pleasure with the board. Motion Gustafson, second Gore, rule call, please.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wigan?
Yes. So we will now adjourn to closed session, County Council.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider four items of existing litigation, two items of anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, two items of public employment, and one item of conference with the real property negotiators.
Thanks, Karen. The board has returned from closed session, and County Council will report out.
The board met in closed session to consider the following. Charles Wilson versus County, the board heard a report and authorized representation of the named defendant. County of Placer versus GNS Carpus Mills, the board heard a report and authorized settlement. Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association versus County, the board heard a report and provided direction. Ryan Harris versus Placer County, the board heard a report and authorized representation of the named defendant. I want to correct on the record on Charles Wilson versus County, the board heard a report and provided direction. Apologize for that. Under initiation of litigation, the board heard a report and provided direction. Under potential exposure to litigation, the board heard a report and provided direction. Conference with labor negotiators, the board heard a report and provided direction. On both of the items under public employment, the board heard a report and provided direction. And finally, on conference with real property negotiators, the board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. Lots of directions. With that, we are adjourned for the day. Thank you.